All right, good afternoon, everyone. Going to call this meeting to order. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda, or is it?
Nope.
Yep, all right, hearing numb. Need a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Second, motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. We're going to move right on to finance. Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Item 2.1 is a request for approval of the year-end budget amendments. All right, at the end of every fiscal year, we always present these budget amendments so I can get all the budgeted figures and expenditures in line with where they should be according to the Purpose and Function Code. And we'll just quickly run through these budget amendments. The first one is budget amendment number five, and this is to the State Public School Fund. And you'll see there, at the very top are the revenues, and I am increasing the State Public School Fund by $548,676.85. And this is just from revisions that come in through the state during the year. So where my budget was less than that, so I'm just making it come up to what it matches as far as the funding from DPI. And then on, right underneath that are the expenditures, also in the same dollar amount. And you see that they're set up by Purpose and Function Code, and it either shows increase or decreases in those particular Purpose and Function Codes. The bottom line is also a net increase in the expenditures of $548,676.85. The state budget prior to this amendment was $13,221,216.26. And adding this in, this amendment in, the final state budget for us for this fiscal year, we $13,769,893.11. So this is basically taking the additional money that we had not had budgeted. We were counting on it. We knew it was coming. And then just appropriating it by the proper Purpose and Function Code, okay? And as we go along, if y'all have questions, you may certainly just let me know. All right, that's the State Public School Fund. Any questions on that? All right, if not, the next one, budget amendment number six, is to the Local Current Expense Fund. And you see revenues, first two line items is the county appropriation for Pamlico County Schools and the county appropriation for Arapahoe Charter School. So what this shows is when we got the original appropriation, and based on how we estimated the enrollment was going to be for us and for Arapahoe, over the 12 months, the figures changed a little bit, the enrollment figures changed. We get those figures from the charter school every month, so we have to recalculate the monthly appropriation that we send to them. And bottom line is, from what we originally budgeted, we should have got $21,919 more. And the charter school should have got $24,025.72 less. And the reason that doesn't match is right below that, you'll see there are two North Carolina cyber, the virtual academies, North Carolina Cyber Academy and North Carolina Virtual Academy. These are, both of these academies are out of Durham. And we have two Pamlico County students that are, that participate in that virtual academy from home here in Pamlico County. And for the virtual academy, they have one of our students. And even though they don't come here, they live in Pamlico County, we have to pay those virtual charter schools. I know, doesn't seem right. Doesn't seem right to me either, but that's what we have to do. Okay? Fines and forfeitures, what we had budgeted, we actually received a little bit more money in fines and forfeitures than we budgeted for, so I'm increasing that line item by $19,226.40. And then on the fund balance appropriation, I'm upping that by $80,000. For the past couple of years, our fund balance had gone up, and we got it to the point last year where it was actually over a million dollars, which was, I mean, that was really good for us. It really had never been that high before. So I knew at some point in time that was going to end, and we'd just have to start going into that fund balance a little bit. So, and in reality, that's probably, as far as the county commissioners are concerned, it's probably a good thing because they're always asking about the fund balance, and how much of it are we appropriating for this year and for next year? So that's, that's been a big topic of discussion in the, after, when we made our presentation to them, and then the budget meetings that we attended thereafter. I think there was three or four of them that we actually went to. So a total increase in the revenues of $99,226.40. Down below that are the expenditures, again, by Purpose and Function Code, and you see increases and decreases. That's a combination of either shifting somebody from one fund to the other, or an increase in expenditures that really I didn't have budgeted for or anticipated. And you see there's several increases and several decreases. The net increase is $99,226.40. The original current expense budget was $4,441,000. And with this increase, the final current expense budget will be $4,550,226.40. Any questions on that? All right, if not, we'll go to the next budget amendment, which is budget amendment number seven. And this is for the Federal Grant Fund. This is a two-pager. On the front page are the revenues, and then on second page two are the expenditures. On the Federal Grant Fund, the revenues have to be budgeted by Program Report Code, and that's why there's so many of those here. Obviously, all of them aren't filled in, but throughout the year, there are allotment revisions where we may get some additional funding. So you see the revenues there. The majority of them are increases. There's one small increase, and that was just a zero that particular Program Report Code out. The net increase is $261,098.41. And again, just to reiterate, these aren't funds that we got that we weren't anticipating. It wasn't extra money that we got. We were anticipating this money coming all along, and there was a purpose of it to be spent. Not all this money has been spent because most of the federal grants do carry over from one year to the next. So that's the revenues. And then on the second page are the expenditures. And again, you see increases and decreases in the expenditures by Purpose and Function Code. And again, the net increase is the same, $261,098.41. The beginning of federal budget was $3,986,650.23. And with this amendment, the final appropriation for the Federal Grant Fund will be $4,247,748.64. This dollar amount is larger than what we typically have in federal because we still have quite a bit of COVID money, ESAR monies that are still in here that will carry over, that we use this year, and some of it will carry over to next year. Any questions on that?
Is this the last year, though, that we will receive ESAR funds?
No. ESAR, ESAR II money has to be spent this fiscal year. I think there's a grace period through September where you can encumber the money. But ESAR, next year will be ESAR III, will be the last year of the ESAR III money. And that'll pretty much take care of the COVID funds that we have received. And the ESAR III money, that's the big grant that we hired all the instructional tutors, learning acceleration coordinators, additional teachers. So we've got one more year of that grant. It was a three-year grant.
So this $88,000 ESAR III state grant, that has to be spent this year, or will that carry over?
No, that can carry over. And we spent some of that, but we didn't spend it all.
And so then we'll get more on top of this $88,000?
That'll probably be it.
That will be it?
Yeah, just what we don't spend will carry over to next year.
Oh, okay.
I think the new, the new funding, I think we've gotten, received everything we're going to receive. It's just a matter of when we spend it, and we have to just make sure that we do spend it by the deadline. So that $185,000, that ESAR III, that's actually good through next June 30th. So we have another year to spend any funds that we didn't spend that will carry over. So we didn't spend that. This is just budget funds. Okay, any other questions about the Federal Grant Fund? Okay, if not, we'll go to the next one, which is capital outlay. This is budget amendment number eight. And if you look at the revenues there, all of those revenues are journal entry line items. No money, just a journal entry. School bus replacements is an allotment that comes from DPI. They pay the, for our, we have lease purchase agreements for the yellow school buses that we get, but DPI pays for them. We just have to show, have a record of a journal entry on our books showing the money that was received and dispersed. So that $100,941 is an annual payment on, my guess would be probably four or five school buses. Those buses run about $110,000 right now each, and we've got them in different cycles. So this is probably part of a year-two payment, probably a part of a year-one payment. So again, it's just a journal entries we have to record for the auditors. The next two line items, the lottery fund revenue and the local government sales tax, that is the money that the county spent on the debt payment, the last and final debt payment that they made back in the fall on the new cafeteria and the central, the central office addition back there in the back. And as you can see, that lottery money, $111,075.80, that's, remember, that's our money that we agreed 15 years ago to allow them to use towards debt payment. And then they come up with the difference, the $35,771.19. So that debt is paid in full, so they should not be, that lottery money should come to us now. I know they're already having conversations about them continuing to get that money and to use it. They even wanted to make it part of the capital outlay agreement, which we refused to do. Okay, and then the, the other, the last two are booster club donations. And you see the amount of money that was spent there from the booster club, both at the high school and the middle school. Again, this is just a journal entry, that we get that information from their treasurer. And then there are offsetting entries for the expenditures. And for all of these, they're offsetting entries for expenditures. So a little over $26,000, that's a pretty good chunk of change that the booster club has put into our athletic programs. And that's probably about normal. That's, that's very, very helpful to their athletic programs. And the majority of the time, it's more of it goes to the high school, but it's not always this big of a differential as far as the breakdown. Okay? And then on the, at the second part is the, are the expenditures. And again, you see increases and decreases. You see there's three line items there for the booster club. We separated between equipment, which could be uniforms, warm-ups, jackets, whatever they may give money to buy. And then site improvements, which typically goes to either the football field, baseball field, or the softball field. Few items down there, you see the school bus replacements. There's the offsetting entry for that $100,941. And then down at the very bottom are the offsetting entries for the debt payments from the lottery funds and the sales tax. So the total increase in the capital outlay fund is $274,198.52. And then on page two, which is just the, gives the totals in the signature page, prior to this, the capital outlay budget was $527,364. And now the new total with this amendment will be $801,562.52.
Steve, down on the expenditures, like where we have a decrease for like the ditches and maintenance and HVAC units, does that mean those are not going to get accomplished with it being a decrease?
That just means that that budgeted item was not utilized this year. We didn't have to spend money on the ditches.
Got you.
There was no special equipment or anything in particular that Cory needed.
Okay.
And he's real good about not just buying something to be buying it. And in this day and age, if they don't need it, we're just, we'll just budget it somewhere else.
Okay.
So that's the case with, with all of those items where there were decreases. Either we didn't need that money, or we didn't need all of it. We spent some, but we didn't spend everything we budgeted. Okay, any other questions on capital outlay? Okay, the next one is budget amendment number nine to the Child Nutrition Fund. I used to hate talking about this because it was always gloom and doom, but it's, last couple of years, it's been pretty good news. So the Child Nutrition Fund, you see the increases there. And you may, you may say, well, that's a pretty substantial increase in revenues and expenditures. But I'm here to assure you that the substantial increase is due to the fact that the revenues were so high this year. The, this is the second year in a row that the Child Nutrition Program has really thrived and done, and done well. When we first did the budget for this year, I was pretty conservative because I really didn't know what to expect with a lot of the COVID funds for child nutrition ending. But they definitely showed a large increase in their USDA grants, which means the participation is higher, the food is better, the service is better, and the leadership of that program is very, very good. So you see increases in USDA grants, regular. These are all the meals that are free. And remember, at primary school, Fred Anderson, and the middle school, all meals are free. That's that community eligibility program. You don't have to apply for reduced lunches or free lunches. Those three schools, lunch and breakfast are free. So we encourage those, those students to eat when it's not costing anything. You start paying $285 or something like that for a meal every day for a whole year, and it adds up real quick. So this is a, this is a great program for the Child Nutrition Program. The summer feeding program, this is, was actually from last summer, from last July, when they prepared meals. Supplemental sales, these are when they eat their free lunch, then they go back and buy an ice cream, or they go back and buy, you know, some sort of fruit drink or something, they actually, and they have to pay for those. And then just a small increase in the miscellaneous revenues. So an increase of $877,851. And then I'm showing corresponding expenditures for the Child Nutrition Purpose and Function Code, $847,558. And then indirect cost, $30,293. This is the first year that we've ever been able to, to charge the Child Nutrition Program indirect cost. And for those of y'all that aren't familiar with that, we collect it on federal grants all the time. And it's basically a fee that the school districts gets for monitoring and administering all these federal grants and putting up with all the federal headaches and stuff that go along with it. For the Child Nutrition Program, the program has to be very successful, and they have to have a certain ratio of fund balance. They have to have a certain number of months of fund balance that would cover them for, if they just started not receiving revenues for whatever reason. And last year, the Child Nutrition Program exceeded that and became eligible. So for this year, we're able to collect indirect cost. It's based on last year's numbers. So we know we're going to be able to get it again next year. And so that $30,293, there's a formula that we use based on the expenditures. And I'm thrilled to be able to get that because that goes from child nutrition, who can't afford it, and it goes into Fund Eight, the other restricted fund. So the initial budget in Child Nutrition was $550,000, and obviously, we increased that substantially by the $877,851. So the final Child Nutrition budget will be a little over $1.4 million. And, you know, the audit has yet to be accomplished yet, and that'll be done in probably around September, October. But I can tell you, based on what I've seen so far, they should realize a profit this year for about $400,000. Last year, it was $250,000. And before that, they were losing money. So to me, that's just incredible.
That is true.
And remember, if they go in the negative, you know, eventually, we're going to run out of their own fund balance, and then local has to pick it up, the current, current expense budget. So I'm real thrilled with what Ms. Mancinas has done. She's got a good crew, and they work hard and get along. And I think they're really doing a, doing a great job. Okay, any questions on that? That's Child Nutrition. We've got one more to go. Okay, if not, if you'll turn over to budget amendment number 10, Other Restricted Fund. This is Fund Eight. And just to make it exciting, I've got two versions for you, okay? You'll see two budget amendment number 10s. The first one is what I call version one, and the second one is version two. We'll just kind of run through here quickly, and then I'll tell you the difference in a minute. On the revenue side, a couple of months ago, we received our final Hurricane Florence proceeds funding, which is crazy. Almost five years ago that that happened, and we received our final payment for some mitigation work that we can do at the middle school. And what our plans are with that money is to, this summer, have the two-story building at the middle school. We're still having problems with leaks coming through the windows, through the walls, water seeping through the brickwork. And we're actually had put out some, got some bids to, to make those corrections. And True Coat actually got the, won the bid, and they'll be working on that this summer to take care of those issues. So even though the school's been repaired, even when a hard rain comes, some teachers are having to put buckets in there and catch water here and there. So we want to go ahead and get rid of that because we know we're still three years down the road from getting them out of there. So I'm excited about that. Medicaid Direct Services, and those are funds that typically, at the beginning of the year, I don't budget a whole lot because I really don't know how much we're going to get. But that's a, a very good program where certain employees in the system, based on that, what they working with exceptional children, kids, we're able to file a claim for Medicaid and get reimbursed for some of those expenses. So that's what that, that's what that is. The Local Food for Schools Grant, this was a Child Nutrition Grant that we couldn't run through the Child Nutrition Fund. We had to run it through Fund Eight. This was a program that, that Ms. Mancinas did probably a month or so ago, the Farm to Schools Program. She had a whole week of that. It was great. We got a little bit of money to help with some of those expenses. So that's what that $4,448 is for. Other local operating revenues, that mainly is when schools use activity buses, whether it's for a field trip or athletics or whatever, the bus garage sends the schools an invoice for their mileage. The schools cut a check and send it over here to me, and then I receive that money here. And you may say, well, that doesn't sound fair because we're getting the money, even the transportation budget's not. Well, what I do with that money is, everything in the transportation budget that doesn't apply to yellow buses, I have to reimburse them. So I take that money plus more and reimburse the bus garage for salaries, benefits, parts, anything those guys do over there. If it's not yellow, they have to be reimbursed for it. So that's, it's kind of a triangle of those funds, how it, how it works. So that's a, that's a little over and above what I originally had budgeted. Indirect cost, I originally had budgeted $35,000. I budgeted another $35,000. Thank you, Child Nutrition, for helping us out. So that's an increase in revenues there. The Perry Griffin Foundation, since the, we did a budget amendment back, I think, March in Fund, in Fund Eight. And since then, we've received an additional $51,450, mainly for the softball building equipment. We're still, part of this money was going to the high school for disadvantaged kids to be able to go to camps. And, I mean, it's just all over the place, ROTC expenses. So for the fiscal year, the Perry Griffin Foundation's right over $246,000 is what they've donated. It's just unbelievable. So very, very thankful for that. And then fund balance appropriation. Okay, this is part of version one, right here. This appropriation of $31,435, this has to do with the new school, and it is preliminary things that have happened over there before construction even started. For example, survey, subsurface exploration, and you see that, I mean, they were boring holes to test the soil and to see what they would need to do to make sure that the building stood when they, when they put it up. Fiber optic location, all the way back there from where the baseball field is going to be, all the way over to where the, the new construction will be. Site permits, that total, $31,435. I've already paid that, okay? I don't have any money from the county yet, and we'll talk about that a little more in a minute. So since I've already paid it in this fiscal year, I got to, I got to reflect it in here. Now, we'll get it back from the county eventually, but I have to show it right now. And you can look down there, expenditures, that last line item, capital projects, there's the $31,435. All right, that's version one. All right, that's Version One, okay? So we've got a total increase of $246,617. And so that will make the total other restricted fund budget, All right, turn over to the second one. This is Version Two, still Budget Amendment Number 10. The only difference is that fund balance appropriation line item that we talked about, and that capital projects line item, you see on this version is $160,783. Okay, the difference in those two is $129,348. That's the amount of the first invoice from SFLNA that I received back in March that I haven't paid yet. And the reason I hadn't paid it is because we can't get the money from the county. We did all the paperwork. We submitted the request to DPI for a half million dollars to cover this, the $31,435, and some future invoices coming from SFLNA. The paperwork was signed by us. It was signed by the county commissioners. It went to DPI. They approved it. And the county is sitting on $500,000 right now. But they are not gonna release it until we meet and get together, and they're comfortable that everything's being done correctly. And once we get through this fiscal year end, I think Ms. Jackson has already corresponded with Tim about a couple of dates in July to get together. So it's a little bit aggravating, a little irritating. And I hate holding that invoice for this long that, you know, Robbie has sent. So what I was, this option is, let me go ahead and appropriate the money out of fund balance in this Fund Eight, go ahead and pay him. Then when we do get the money back from the county, put it back in here. I'm surprised, and he's not hounding us at all. It's just shocking how little he's messed with us because there's other invoices. So, you know, after we get through the year end, we want to get with them as soon as we can and get them everything that they need to make sure everything's being done correctly. I mean, this is the first time we've done this. And I know they've done it before, but I just assumed they had it down pat and knew what all to do. But I guess it's been a while since they were doing that. So anyway, Version One or Version Two?
Is there any situation where we wouldn't get reimbursed by the county?
You know, unless it was not a legitimate expense that didn't have to do with this project, obviously, they wouldn't reimburse that. But obviously, we got documentation on that $31,435. That's all dealing with this project. We have invoices from SFLNA. So I would think the only reason that they wouldn't reimburse is if it was not a legitimate expense for this project.
Have they given specific reasons why they're not releasing the money?
Well, we have sent them, I've sent them basically all the paperwork that I have, the contract with the architect, these invoices, the quotes. They still want more. And basically, what they did is they got the information, the application for the funding, sent it to their auditors and their attorney. And then they apparently came back and had a bunch of questions in addition to that, or needed additional information. So I don't think they're being hard to get along with.
Have they given you that list? Have they given you the list of questions or information?
I have received some of them, yes.
And I'll just say, it's pretty massive, and it's impossible right now with year end. So we said after we get through year end, we would, you know, and I actually told them to go ahead and send me four, five, six dates. And what we want is a couple from the board to meet with them, and probably our attorneys, their attorneys, their, some of their county government. I mean, kind of get a committee together that will meet regularly so that everybody will feel comfortable.
So the money was applied for in late May. It was approved, and the money should have been put in their account by the end of the month in May. So, I mean, they've been sitting on it for a month now. And by the time we got the information back from them needing additional information and having questions, then it was mid-June, and I'm right in the middle of closeout, and I can't, you know, I've gotta get through this before I can deal with that. And they know that. So that's where we stand.
But you don't anticipate that it's a problem once you get time to address their?
I don't think so. I think that everything that they're asking for and the questions they have, I mean, we'll be able to answer those and provide what additional information they need. And to be honest with you, as little as I've heard from Robbie, I don't know if this amount of money will make a difference to him getting it before June 30th or not. Probably wouldn't hurt. But I just feel bad that I'm sitting there holding this invoice, and it's obviously 30 days past due plus. And I'm not much on past due invoices that I owe.
Have you explained that to him?
Yes. He says he's okay with it. So it's just a matter of whatever the board feels comfortable with. I feel totally comfortable with Version Two. It's not gonna put us in a financial bind as far as our money with Fund Eight. Local current expense, capital outlay, Fund Eight are all rolled into the same local bank account. So, and child nutrition. So I'm not worried about that. And I can't imagine any scenario where we wouldn't get that money back from the county. Any other questions about either one of those versions?
What you're saying, that you would take the 129, the additional 129,000 out of fund balance and go ahead and?
Go ahead and pay them before Friday, right.
And then when the money comes in from the county, reimburse it to the fund balance.
Right.
And what is our fund balance after that would be paid?
It's probably, if we take the $167,83 out, that'll probably leave probably $200,000 or so. I mean, we don't keep a lot of fund balance in Fund Eight. I mean, that's, we just don't. It doesn't generate a lot of revenue over expenses.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Any more questions on that? I personally, I don't have a problem with Version Two of Budget Amendments in. Because if we don't get money allocated to us that's supposed to come to us, we won't be able to school at all. So I agree with that, yeah.
I think once we get the process down with the county, it'll be a whole lot smoother.
It'll roll.
And that's one thing that Robbie has said is, we don't want these contractors working and turning in invoices expecting to be paid within 30 days. And it's taken 45 or 60 days to get the money from DPI to the county, and then from the county to us so we can pay the bills. So it's in our best interest to make sure we do everything right and get this process rolling properly.
So are you more comfortable with Version Two?
Yes, ma'am. I'm totally comfortable with the Version Two. I would feel a lot better at least being able to make that payment to SFLNA. I mean, they could just say, we're gonna stop what we're doing until we start getting some money. I don't think it would, but it could.
But he could.
Yeah, I'm completely comfortable with that. I think the county, $50 million is a lot of money. So I think they just want to see, we've tried to show them some of this stuff before. But there's some of the commissioners who sometimes won't listen. So we'll have everything prepared for them when we do have that meeting and help them better understand the process of how everything's gonna have to flow. Because like Steve said, once construction starts, we can't have them holding money when contractors are needing to be paid. So we'll get all that fixed upfront, and then the process should run like it's supposed to. So any other questions on these Budget Amendments? So if everyone is comfortable with Version Two, and I think I've seen heads shaking, almost everybody, I think. Helen, are you okay with Version Two?
Yes.
Mr. McCotter? All right, so for the motion to approve the year-end budget amendments to the 2223 fiscal year as presented, as presented is gonna mean Version Two. Is that okay, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. So I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you, Steve.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Item 2.2 is a contract for the auditors to audit our accounts. And I think you have a copy of the management letter and the contract with you. This is item 2.2. And this is a fairly lengthy document, but it's standard stuff that we get every year from the auditors. I will tell you that this contract is for $39,000. The contract last year was $38,000. So, I mean, that's a $1,000 increase, about 2.67%. So that's very reasonable. The names of our companies have changed over the years just from being bought out and stuff.
I was gonna ask that. This isn't the same company name, but I see Lyndy's name on the back.
Yeah, but this is the same Coontz, Luton, and Haywood that we dealt with for years. Now they're Dean Dorton. But the guys that come down are pretty much the same three guys that come down. And they do a good job. They're familiar with us, and we're certainly familiar with them. Again, and that's a very minimal increase in these times, I would say. So I'm totally comfortable with it. And if it's approved, Mr. Prescott and myself will sign the contract, and we'll get that back to Lyndy Faulkner.
I have a question. So I want to make sure I understand, the audit will conclude in October?
The audit period ends June 30th, this Friday, for the 2223 fiscal year. They've already been once. They came in early June and did the compliance part of the audit. And then they'll come back again, usually late September, and they'll do the financial part of the audit. And then they'll go, they stay a week, both times they're here a week. And then they'll go back and prepare the documents and get everything ready. And then, once that document is ready, Lyndy will send it to me. I'll get it to y'all. And usually, it's the November board meeting where he physically comes and makes the presentation to the board about the financial status of the 2223 fiscal year. And then, once you approve it, it has to go to the local government commission for their approval. So there's a process that we have to go through for that.
Any more questions on this? This is pretty standard, something we have to do. So we've got a good working relationship with these folks. So if there's no other questions, I entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. You good, Eric?
All right, item number 2.3 is an interim budget resolution. And I'll get on to next year.
On to next year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, the agenda item is for interim budget resolution for July. I did speak to Brian before the meeting, not realizing that there probably won't be a July open session meeting. So I've actually have two in here, one for July and one for August. And Brian said that was okay to do that. So you basically have two interim budget resolutions before you. One is for July, and one is for August. And what this does, this just allows us to continue to operate and pay bills and spend state and federal money until we get our uniform budget approved for the 2324 fiscal year. And we typically wait until the state passes their budget. We get our initial allotments and see what we're working with. And then I put the uniform budget together. That covers all six funds. So once we have that together, but until then, we need approval to spend state and federal money. We've got it for current expense and capital outlay because hopefully here in a few minutes, you're gonna approve that revised budget. But this just allows us to pay bills. The dollar figures on there is this year's expenditures divided by 12. It's just an average of what we did this year, one month's worth of expenditures, okay? And the figures are the same for July and August. Just helps us keep rolling once we start the new fiscal year.
Any questions on this? All right, here, and I entertain a motion to approve as presented. Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll stay in business for two more months.
All right, thank you. Item 2.4, requesting approval of the revised local current expense and capital outlay budgets for next year. As you recall, several months ago, at the second special budget meeting, we had the board approve a proposed current expense and capital outlay budget for next year. We went to the county commissioners on May 15th and presented that budget. And lo and behold, they didn't give us everything we asked for. So we have to make some adjustments to that. So we'll look at these one at a time. And we'll start with capital outlay.
The warehouse is loving us.
Okay, for capital outlay, originally, we went to the county commissioners. And the capital outlay budget that the board approved back in April, I believe, was for $444,945. So that's what we asked for. This year, that's just finishing up, we got $400,000 from them. So for next year, we asked for an increase of $44,495. They ended up giving us $386,800. And there's a caveat to that. In the original budget process, the recommendation from the county manager to their board was, keep the funding level at $400,000. We're not giving you additional $44,945, but we will give you $400,000, same we got this year. Which was fine. We could work with that. But in the conversations with the local current expense budget, they cut our, they were gonna, we asked for a 7.15% increase. They, the recommendation was four and a half, which was not enough for us to take our teacher supplement from 11% to 12%. So anyway, there was a lot of conversations, and I've got a feeling that some of you board members may have talked to some county commissioners to stress the importance of that local teacher supplement. So at one of the budget meetings that we attended at the county, one of the commissioners made a motion to decrease the capital outlay by $13,200, and then take that money, add basically $30,000 to it, and put it in current, give us that much more in current expense. And they would pay for half of the increase in that 1% increase in the local teacher supplement. So what they were saying was, we're gonna take a little bit of capital. We'll add it with some more current expense money. We'll pay half of the cost of going from 11% to 12%, if the Board of Education will pay the other half. And I know Mr. Prescott was involved in that conversation with several of the county commissioners. I attended that, when I was at that meeting, they voted on it. They approved it. It wasn't unanimous, but they approved it. So that's what they did. And then I- And then on June 19th, they had their public hearing, and then they approved their budget. So, they actually reduced our capital outlay, $13,200, down to $386,800. And then, originally, Tim was recommending a four and a half percent increase in current expense. That went up to five and a half. And then, we had to appropriate a little bit more fund balance so we could, in fact, keep that 12 percent local teacher supplement in there. So anyway, that's, that's a long story just to tell you of, we didn't, we didn't, we're not getting $400,000 next year, we're getting 386,800. And basically, what I've done is gone in and just made reductions to things that I felt like we could afford to make cuts. That was about $56,000 less than what we had asked for. So, I looked at all the furniture and equipment money, budgeted, and I, I reduced that sum. We looked at Ms. White's technology budget, which was a little over $309,000, and we reduced that down to 290. So, that was about a night, a little over $19,000 budget, and I just, I think she'll be able to do what she needs to do with that. And then, I just went line item by line item, and just picked a little bit here and a little bit there, so it won't be too terribly painful for, for any school or anybody. So, that's what this is. And I will ask you to look on this handout. If you'll go to page six. All right, so the funding from the county will be $386,800. We will appropriate $50,000 in fund balance, which we had that in our budget request already. So, the total tech, capital outlay budget will actually be $436,800. And I feel totally comfortable, we can do what we need to do. The, a lot of the major repairs to, to our schools has really dropped in the last couple of years. We are having quite a bit of focus on heat and air conditioning units, but general repairs, everything seems to be in fairly decent shape, and we just need to get through the next three years until we get this new school open, and we will be, we will be set. So this revised budget will give us 400, a total of $436,800, $50,000 of that in capital outlay fund balance, and $386,800 in county appropriation. I know that's a lot. Any questions on that?
Any questions on capital outlay? Sir, we're going to, we're going to do capital outlay and local and current together, right?
Do it together, yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay, so, we'll talk about current expenses.
Thank you, ma'am.
Frank, if I didn't get this off, and you didn't have a question, then I wouldn't have that answer for you. So I just really do over people.
Steve is a tree killer.
Grow them every day. Renewable resource.
I probably should have given you this very top page a while ago, it might have made a little more sense. All right, look on the left-hand side, in the gray shaded column, the budget for this year, you see the local current expense broken down for us and then for a Rappo Charter School, totaled $4,320,000 this year, and then capital outlay, $400,000, for a total funding of 4.72 million. The next column is what we requested from the county commissioners, total current expense, $4,628,799, or an increase of $308,799, a 7.15 percent increase. And we asked for $444,945 in capital outlay, and that was an 11.2 percent increase. So total funding increase was $353,744, a total of a seven and a half percent increasing funding. And total budget, just a little over $5 million. All right, so then, if you look in the, the light green shaded area, you see the county adjustments to our request. They cut, if you, if you look at the total current expense, our funding was cut $71,199, and you see the cuts to both us and to a Rappo Charter School. So, the total funding for current expense will be $4,557,600. That's a $237,000, $237,600 increase, or five and a half percent. And I tell you, in today's age and time, I'm pretty pleased with that. I mean, I, I really felt like they might just hold us flat and not give us any additional current expense funding. For capital outlay, they cut our request by $58,145, and they're giving us $386,800. And then, that's a $13,200 decrease over what we got, got this year, which we, we talked about that a while ago. So the total approved, approved funding from the county, $4,944,400, total increase of So, basically, what I've got, what I have to look at as far as cutting, making cuts, because see, whenever they give us money, like, they gave us half, a 1 percent increase in the, in the local supplement from 11, 12 percent, cost us about $75,000. Well, what you have to take into consideration is, when we, if we get, when we get that money, the charter school is going to get a certain percentage in addition to that. So, the county actually gave us $43,200, and then we had to put in $37,500 in fund balance. Thankfully, we don't have to share our fund balance with them, but...
For now.
For now.
For now.
Yeah.
We're all singing "for now." Gosh, it's crazy.
For now. So anyway, what we've got to do is look at the, the difference between what we requested for Pamela Cogani Schools, the increase, look back on the gray side, on the dollar increase requested, $259,473. That's what we needed, that's what we said we needed. We're getting an increase of $197,628 over in the approved dollar column in the green area. So the difference with that is $61,400, $845. That's how much we're, we were short. Well, I'm appropriating an additional $37,500, so you subtract that from the $61,845, so I really only got about $24,000 to cut. So, and again, just like capital, I went through that budget and just started making gradual cuts, and it doesn't take too long to get that amount of money. Most of it went to the hospitalization costs that I had figured. I figured really, really high, thinking, because I just had a feeling for some reason that it was going, the hospitalization rate was going to go up. This year, it was right at $7,400, and I think I budgeted $8350. That's not going to happen. It's going to be a very minimal increase. So I could just pick every line item in the local budget and just adjust those down, and it didn't take long to take care of that $23,000 to cut. So, the line item budget is here, and if you'll look on the, look on the very next page, after that, that first page, and again, you, there's the, there's a total funding there, how much we'll receive from the county for current expense for us and the charter school, and then, remember, there's still, there's still a few other line items in the current expense budget, fines and forfeitures, disposition of fixed assets, that's very rarely ever, we realize, little, very little income from that. But the fines and forfeitures, we do have to share with the, with the charter school, so that's in there. And then, originally, I had $100,000 appropriated in fund balance, so I've increased that to $137,500. And again, the local current expense budget fund balance, we're right over $1 million, so I feel very comfortable with this, appropriating this dollar amount, and maybe it'll help when the commissioners see that we're actually putting in a little more money of our own than, probably not as much as they think we should, but still, that, hopefully, that'll help some. The bottom line is, it allows us to do what we need to do next year, it allows us to increase the local teacher supplement from 11 percent to 12 percent, and nobody around us will be able to touch it. Because we originally had thought that Craven had gone from 10 to 11 last year, and we found out that they didn't, but they, we'll this year, they'll probably go from 10 to 11. So we'll stay one percentage point ahead of them. And if you take a teacher that's making $50,000, $60,000, and you figure that supplement is pretty substantial.
That's, I was just doing the math on just, you know, like, a $40,000 or $50,000 salary, going from 11 to 12, it's, it's going to be, you know, right at $500 or more that they're going to get from that. So, I think the appropriation and, that we made and what the county commissioners hopefully shows how much we support our teachers.
Yeah.
Because that, that's a significant increase, even though it's 1 percent, it's...
Yeah, it's still 12.
It's still a significant increase.
Mr. Steve, just so I can understand, when you decrease something like, I see a decrease in longevity, does that mean someone is not going to be eligible for their longevity pay or...
It either means that I budgeted too much this year, or that person is no longer funded out of local, they may, I may have moved him to state or to another fund, or, that's, that's mainly it. I mean, nobody, if, if you're eligible, I don't know of any reason why they wouldn't be eligible again. I mean, and now, you know, now, teachers don't get longevity. Principals and assistant principals don't. It's pretty much central office and non-certified people are all that get them. So, most of them in, in this budget here are custodians, clerical people that have been here 10 years or longer, that's how long you have to be here to, to earn longevity. And more than likely, I probably budgeted too much, you know, not knowing exactly for sure, or, or I switched somebody, you know, from one fund to another. But it wouldn't mean that anybody is no longer eligible, you know, unless they left, you know, maybe that, that could possibly be it. And all the, all the decreases you see on that right-hand column, the red decreases, that's not the cuts that I made. Those, most of those were already there. I mean, I'm making, I'm trying to reduce line items every year. I may have taken some of those and, and made adjustments to it a little bit. I know, for example, like, there's a line item in there for teachers for travel, and it's typically for itinerant teachers that may go from one school to the other, and most of them don't even fill out an expense report, and the ones that do, I mean, we're so close, it's 20 or 30 bucks a month. And I could go in, I might have $1,500 budgeted there, I can go in and cut that by 1,000 and still have enough to take care of them. So, those are the kind of cuts that I've made to try to get, make everything balance out. And I, I'll be more than happy to go through the entire line item budget. I don't think you want me to, but I'll be glad to. It's very boring. But the main thing is, we, this budget will allow us to hopefully meet all our expenditures and get this 12 percent supplement in place, which is a pretty good draw.
Any more questions on these? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the local current expense and capital outlay budgets for the 2324 school year as presented. Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hands. All right.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. We have presented to you, and tonight, for your approval and adoption, Part 1 of the 4,000 series of our policy updates or policy revisions. There are several policies here tonight. If you vote to approve and adopt these policies, I will come to you next month with a list of policies that we need to pretty much rescind from the old policy manual because they've been updated tonight.
All right, again, this is second reading. So, we have first reading. Any questions on these?
I have a couple of questions. Policy code 4100, it says grade level, initial entry. And so, the board, board members understand which policy I was speaking of. It says the initial point of entry will be kindergarten level. After initial entry, a principal may move the child to the first grade if the principal determines that by reason of maturity, the child may be served or appropriate in the first grade. Is, is there a certain tool, or how, how is that measured for them to make that decision?
There is an assessment. Most of the time, it, sometimes it's administered by, I think, the school psychologist, I believe. But there is a tool, there is a metric for determining that that student, maturity-wise, as well as academically, ready to move to the next level.
Mr. Gibbs, it's not, it doesn't happen often, and I know Ms. Delmar being in curriculum before, might tell you, it's not something that happens very often, it's a rare occurrence.
I was, you know, going over there, I just...
Right, curious. I understand.
When, when, if it happens, would, and a parent, if a parent disagrees that they want their child to go to another level, is that taken into account, or...
Yeah, and it's not just arbitrary, that they just say, oh, I, I think, you know, this child needs to move to the next level. You know, nine times out of 10, that teacher's going to identify that this child is, is gifted, this child is, is bright. This, the board, they really can do more, so let's get them tested to see if they are ready to move to the next level.
Okay. The, the other question I had was related to policy 4155, placement flexibility. And it says the board authorizing direct superintendent and school administrators to be flexible in waiving course or program prerequisites or other preconditions for placement in courses or programs offered by the school system. And I guess my question is, I look at prerequisites as being something that you have to take in preparation for the next thing. What situ, what situation would allow a prerequisite to be waived for that, that, for them to go to a higher level course?
More than likely, it's probably a situation, let's just say you're a senior, or you need this course to move to the next level, or let's just say you need this course as a senior to graduate, but we don't have time for you to go back or take another course. So, we can make that exception to place you so that you go ahead and complete this course and go forward.
And again, I haven't been asked to approve any of those in eight years, so...
And also, you know, just reading, I just, those two things just came up, so...
And in a lot of these policies, you find, these provisions are there, the policies are there, the, the rules are there, like the superintendent says, rarely do they ever come up. But if they do, we protect, and the board is protecting, having a policy to govern whatever that particular action may be.
Yeah, that was the point I was going to make. If you had a parent come and says, I want to move my child from kindergarten to first grade, we do have a policy in place that protects us. A policy and procedure that has to go forth to make that determination, so... Any other questions? Kathy?
I'm just going to say that I appreciate all the work that Dr. Patrick has put into this policy study and the review of the policies, and he's very patient with us, because... because one of us has lots of questions, and I do appreciate you. Uh, no, I'm talking about myself. When, when we have our committee meetings, so, um, and he...
You guys can rest assured that a lot of questions have been answered before they ever get to you, because Ms. Delmar has asked a lot of questions.
I do feel for you, Dr. Patrick, and he's been very good about listening to everybody and, and trying to edit and make changes so that everybody's happy. So, but I do have to say that policy forty-two-oh-two, service animals in schools, I've really struggled with that, but after much, much, much discussion, Dr. Patrick and, uh, board attorney has convinced me that that's pretty much federal requirements. And, but I've really struggled with that. I'm gonna say I've spent a lot of time really, really struggling over this one. I do, I do agree, when people need service animals, that, that that's appropriate.
Yes, that's right.
But I really struggle with the fact that a miniature horse could come into our classrooms. But I'm going to let that go because I checked the other counties around us, and they have the same policy, so I'm just gonna trust that the process will work, as it's supposed to work, so... But thank you, Dr. Patrick, for all you put up with.
For all you put up with.
But, and thank you for your due diligence of just being on the committee, yeah.
That's right.
And our other two committee members over here, thank y'all.
We have a good time.
And usually Rachel or one of the other attorneys are in there too, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? All right, again, this is second reading, so we do, we can approve these tonight. Um, if that's a pleasure of the board, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Thank you, and thank you to our committee members, y'all doing a, I knew this is a big task. Thank you. Yeah, okay. Yep, yep.
And Brian might wanna jump in. He's gonna talk then.
All right, Jean, before I get you to read the motion to go into closed session, so others, for example, Ms. White back here, some others that they won't have to stay until we come out of closed session, because, uh, we've got a lot to discuss in closed session, so we're gonna approve going into closed session, we're gonna do our personnel report for action and information, then we're gonna come out of closed session, come back into open session, so we can have the motion to approve those, and then we'll go back into closed session and finish the rest of our closed session business tonight. So is everybody okay with that? Otherwise, you might have to stay here till midnight. What's that look, Eric? Might be, well, it might be two or three o'clock in the morning before we leave. I told you I'll be ready for a long night. So is everybody okay with that arrangement?
I guess I am eating supper.
So Brian, when we go into closed session, can I recess closed session?
Recess.
Okay, all right.
And then we'll go back.
And then we'll, okay, all right.
We need a separate motion.
All right. So, Mr. Dudley?
I moved at the Pamlico County Board of Education, entering to closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute one-four-three-dash-three-eighteen-point-one-one-A-one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty-U.S.C. one-two-three-two-G and G.S. one-fifteen-C-dash-four-oh-two confidential personnel matters as provided in N.C. G.S. one-four-three-dash-three-eighteen-point-one-one-A-one in five and six and one-fifteen-C-dash-three-nineteen, and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve your attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute one-four-three-dash-three-eighteen-point-one-one-A-three.
All right, have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be going into closed session six-fifteen.